Good afternoon and welcome to the Waterloo City Council Work Session. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bozen.
Here.
Ms. Creighton Smith, Mr. Childs.
Mr. Simon.
Here.
Ms. Wilder.
Mr. Foyce.
Here. Motion, please.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Nichols.
Here.
I was just looking at the space. I was like, don't pause too long, make it awkward.
Can I have a motion for the agenda, please?
Mayor Proten.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to approve the agenda as proposed and the approval of the minutes of February seventeenth, twenty twenty five, as proposed or amended.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. We have an agenda and at this time, we're going to have a discussion on the fiscal year twenty twenty six budget with our finance director. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Bridget Wood, Finance Director. So today, we're going to be going over our proposed levy rates. These are, again, not the ones that we will end up certifying, but these are the ones that we start with and then we work our way back before we approve our budget at the second meeting in April. These rates will be ones that are published in the newspapers with, it'll be published in the newspaper from us and then the county auditor will send mailings out to all residents that, I think those go out March twentieth. Anyway, so for our proposed rates, let's see, so we, Kim and I and the mayor and with any other input, we'll work through this month to continue to reduce any expenses and increase revenues with each department. And again, this is typically, these are the max rates or they used to be known as max rate levies, meaning once these were published, there was no way we could go over them. This is similar in this fashion where these are the proposed rates, but we will most likely certify lower. Even with these levy rates higher than they had been in the, in the previous year, we are still working on a two point three million dollar deficit from our initial look at all of the budgeting. On later slides, I will show you, there's a link that I, we've got a budget simulator created where the public and or anybody can go in and submit suggestions for expenses, reductions or increases, and then also for revenue ideas. And then the reason why these need to be, or this needs to be reviewed today in the work session is because it's due to the state on March fifth. So we have to enter all that information in for the, in the state's website for the county auditor to pull, and then they will then send out those notices by the twentieth of March. So like I said before, this is where we're starting, but what we actually certify will be lower than this. This just gives you an idea of where we're at for next year's budget. This is kind of hard to read on your handouts, but they, it covers over all of the revenues and expense, expenses for all of our funds that we have, including the general fund. The current levy rate proposal is at twenty-two dollars and sixty-eight, six eight, six nine zero cents, which is a two point six nine nine percent increase for non-agricultural and then ag, the agricultural levy is a point zero zero one decrease. On the bottom, you can see the change in property taxes per, for a hundred thousand dollar house and then a three hundred thousand dollar business. And those are what will be shown on the notices that go out to residents as well. So it does show a fifteen point seven four percent change for residential and a seventeen point one four percent change for commercial. So to break down what our proposed levy rates are for police and fire, we're looking at, out of the proposed levy total, fourteen dollars and thirty-four cents is going to police and fire. That's sixty-three percent of the general fund amount, sixty-three percent of the levy rate to, that would go to just police and fire. The debt service, we have in there at three point three two, one five one, which is fifteen percent of that levy, overall levy rate, and then other services are a little over five dollars.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Bridget, is that, when you, when you say this fourteen thirty-four and three thirty-two, is that per the, per?
Yes.
Taxable thousand?
Yep.
Thank you. I apologize for interrupting.
And then the breakdown for the other, all other services is on the next slide. It has, it broke down into building inspections, public works, health and social services, culture and rec, community and economic development and general government. So these are the program breakdowns that we needed, as we need to fill it out on the state's website. So like Public Works has, like their central garage and that kind of stuff in it. Health and social services is just our human rights. Culture and rec is the arts center and leisure services. Community and economic development is just the general fund portion of any economic development and I believe the convention center is in there as well as hotel motel stuff is in there as well. And then general government would be mayor, city council, all the admin programs that are in the general fund. So here is, these are the current proposed expenditure amounts for each section as well, each function. Most of these are funded primarily by property taxes. So as you can see above, her, see with the public safety, there's forty-six point three million of it and that account, that counts for, again, over sixty percent of our collected taxes. But not all of the, not all of the collected taxes pay for those services. On the debt service fund, this just shows out of how much we will be paying back in principal for twenty-six, which is a little over twelve million. Only nine point nine of that of, between the principal and the interest will be actually be coming from taxed or levied rates. The rest of it is broken out into sewer, we'll pay some back, TIF will pay some back. So that's that one there. For any new council members that aren't sure how property taxes are calculated, I've included these slides. The way that they're calculated is the county assessor will set the property values, the state sets out the rollback, which happens in end of November, or end of October, beginning of November. And then sometimes there's equalization orders, but they haven't issued those for a while. And then the cities, counties and schools will set their portions based on what the code says for, when their budgets need to be set. So right now for residential, the rollback is at forty-seven point four three one six percent. That is an increase, again, over last year's rate. So even if our levy rates go down, the amount of taxable house or taxable dollar in a house is increased, so property taxes, even if our levies lower, the property taxes collected could be higher. So then this just breaks it down on how you would see that in a hundred thousand dollar house between fiscal twenty-five's rollback and fiscal twenty-six's rollback. That just gives you an idea of, on here, we have the total levy rate, which is everybody's levy rate, including the schools and county and all of that. And then I have on here that we have a simulator now that we, I've gotten updated to for the proposed twenty twenty-six budget. The link is on here. If you need me to email it to you or whatever, I can do that as well. I'm having Agnes update our website to include a link to it and as well as instructions on how to use it. But the picture is what you would basically see when you're looking at it. I have it set out currently to show the deficit that we are working towards getting balanced. There are pictures with categories that are locked, so it'll have a little lock icon. If it doesn't have that, there's something within it that will allow you to change, whether it be revenue or expenses. There is some questions under, I think it's cultures and rec where the grout is located. There's a couple of questions in there to get feedback if you wanted to continue to fund grout at how we had been in fiscal twenty-five, or if we need, if we want to start lowering while we're funding them, since we need to be prepared for the general fund levy to go back to eight-ten. And then I've also got in there the use of fund balance in case that would be an option if you wanted to use. There'll be two sections in that. One would be to completely eliminate the current deficit and the section, the second section would be to use more than what we needed for the deficit to then also lower levy rates that way. It is an option. We refer to not use our, our fund balances if possible, but it is an option. And then it also has like two different sections. There's, you can either submit a comment on the line item, or you can submit a comment in the separate comment box. That way you can submit any suggestions that you have, or if you have any comments on, need more information, whatever, we can get that information to you. So this will help give us some ideas on if anybody has other, other revenue ideas and or ideas for either preferably decreasing expenses, or if they needed a, they wanted to increase public safety by another million dollars, where are they going to pull it from? But that's what the budget simulator will help figure out. And that's it. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, just really quickly, and the directive at the onset was do not increase your expenses. So each department head was given that directive. So the majority of what you see right now is all related to increases in salaries and if there's any health. So those are the majority of increases with some changes. We got a few dollars back, we got a few dollars with regards to some of the rollback that we have in there. I think it was less than five hundred thousand dollars that we were able to use. And so this is just to, this is setting at this levy, this will not be the final once we get through this entire process. So, Mr. Simon.
Is this new, this budget simulator?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I thought. And then when, and who is all going to have access to this budget simulator?
The emails come to the finance department.
Okay, but I mean, just the council?
You mean who can use it?
Who can use the link?
And who's?
Everybody.
Everybody.
Okay, and then, and then you guys will review those?
Yep, we'll take them in.
And look for suggestions or proposals? Okay. And then, when will the?
Filter it out.
What's that?
I said, we'll take them in and filter through them to see if it's something that we can actually do versus something that's not feasible.
When's the deadline on that? Will that be posted or?
We need to have our, once we get through the mailing of the notices, which is March, so March, through March twentieth, then after that, we'll be making changes to our budget to work through any, like I said, we could go and use any suggestions that we get versus stuff that we go and find in the next three weeks before we can set our stuff for our final budget approval.
So beginning March twentieth is when you'll start being able to use this, or that's?
No, you can use it now.
Use it now.
Active now.
And what's the March twentieth? That's on the?
March twentieth would be when the notices will go out to residents from the auditor's office.
Okay.
So I would probably cut it off then and not make it available for people to access.
Thank you.
And kudos for putting this tool into place, too, Bridget. Mr. Nichols.
So this is the, like you had mentioned, and the mayor had mentioned the, the max proposed levy rate. Do you have like a departmental goal target of where you're hoping to, you think realistically you can get down to?
I believe realistically, we'll be able to get lower than what we are for fiscal twenty-five. We just don't have final numbers on that yet.
Okay, very good, very good. And then as far as year over year for the proposed levy rate, as far as percentage of levy, how, how does that match up against previous year as far as on slide six, debt service particularly, police, fire, as far as the percentage of the levy?
Police and fire is typically over sixty percent of our budget and then the other two kind of fluctuate depending on how much debt we've issued versus any other increases that other services might have.
All right, and the state, the state, sorry, Mr. Nichols, the state, the state gives us the ability to set at eight point nine one right now by the twenty-eight. That needs to be at eight-ten. And so a goal would be, we need to get to eight, eight-nine-one. If everything freezes over, we have to be at eight-nine-one. And then we've been working through some scenarios of savings and revenue generation to take a look at the, getting back to the eight-ten, which will be required in, in twenty twenty-eight. Now remember what she mentioned as well, the library, that's twenty-seven cents that has been added to our eight-ten. The grout is another twenty-seven cents that has been added to our eight-ten. So just those two alone puts us at eight point six-four. And so we need to work back and then, like I mentioned, with salary increases over those years, we need to work towards that. But we've been meeting, taking a look long range, meeting with other cities to figure out how we could collaborate to meet some of those goals to, to start moving towards that eight, eight-ten levy. Mr. Bozen.
Thank you, and you answered one of my questions. One of the, one of the questions I had was when we have to get down to the eight-ten, you know, that emergency levy was just, that's twenty-one cents. That's, that, that was just helping us. We didn't declare an emergency or something to spend that twenty-one cents. We've got to get down, down to the eight-ten in, in, in a couple of years and that's going to be a problem. How much is local, is the one point two million in local option sales tax? And then a, can you go over, because we, twenty percent of local option sales tax, we can only use fifty percent of that this year.
Correct, which is around one point two million.
One point two.
One point two. And then, and then where are we at with our, I've had this discussion with, where are we at with ATE?
I haven't heard where we're at on the appeal on that.
So we?
No, I mean, I don't mean the appeal.
Or you mean like money?
I mean the ability to use money for, outside of, outside of our four hundred and twenty thousand dollars for Axon.
I, we were just going over that last week. I don't, I could get the paperwork that we've put together on where that's at. We're budgeting for twenty-six to have it pay for Axon and Gato fees, so.
And that's it?
That's it.
Yeah.
Wow.
Just to meet those obligations. We literally, with state changes, lost two million dollars.
Yes.
And so we've, we've accounted not to be able to use any and all. So all of this, what you see to where we're at is without any ATE, was, it'll be without any fund balance, it will be without any remainder of COVID. And that's why last year, we wanted to see exactly where we're, we're at, so we know where, where we stand at and what changes that we have to make. And so at the end of this calendar year, well, at the end of the calendar year, I think we would know, or who would have that. But you're talking about budgeting, because normally at the end of the calendar year, we figure out how much we have left over.
We were doing calendar on.
We've got that figured in our office. I just, I don't have that number out there right now.
So that, yeah, and that, that's worrisome in itself, but then next year's budget, not this year's budget, we should have the full twenty percent of local option sales tax.
Well, it'll, it'll only count, it'll only count as one, it only count as fifty percent because we get the other half now. So we'll know, we get one point two, so you can only add another one point two to next year, because we're getting fifty percent this year. And then, so we get one point two million to use in the next fiscal year.
Right.
Then the following year, it'll be two point four.
That's what I'm getting at.
But, right.
The following year, we'll have two point four million of additional revenue to help offset taxes.
Want to be one point two million of additional.
One point two additional.
Addition, you're right, but a total of two point four out of local option sales tax.
Yes.
That's what, that's all I'm trying to get at. But how much has it, has it affected us with the senior homestead and, and the milit, and then the changes in military homestead? Because all of a sudden, you were getting minimal homestead credits and now you're getting six thousand dollars that's coming off, off of our values of our homes. It's, that, that, I mean, that hit county hard. How, how hard is that hitting us?
I had those figures at the last budget session. I could pull that information for you.
Because that's affecting us, too.
Absolutely.
And it's, and it's everything that's, that they're, that is coming out of Des Moines is, is all, everything starts local, I guess. So does, so does, so does this mess, but.
Yeah, and then, and then there's more changes coming from Des Moines potentially, but some of us, I know Bridget, Noel and team are headed down to the Local Legislators' Day tomorrow for the Iowa League. I'm on calls probably two to three times a week with the Metro Coalition and with the Iowa League of Cities and the Legislative Committee, trying to, try to figure out where these changes are. But I would probably say the two million dollars that we had for folks breaking the law, that we were able to pay for a lot of our services within the police department and property tax relief, that's a huge, huge, huge.
That's an excellent.
Impact for us, which would have placed us under last year's levy if we still were able to use those dollars. So I know that Captain, Captain, Chief Duncan, Chief Duncan had sent over some of the revisions that the state had asked for, so we'll see how, see how that goes.
Are there going to be, do you anticipate any changes in the, in the police and fire pension fund this year, up or down?
I believe it, our, like our portion of it, I think it's, it was a very small decrease to how much the city was then responsible for.
I mean, it fluctuates between twenty-four and twenty-seven cents.
I think we pay like twenty-two, don't quote me on this, is a little over twenty-two dollars, or twenty-two, twenty-two percent of their pay.
Well, that's low compared to other years.
That is lower than other years.
Yes.
I think two years ago, it was at like almost thirty percent.
It was, yeah, that's what I mean, it fluctuates so much, but I was just curious if you'd heard what, what that's, and, and how that, if you know what that is, how that's going to affect our budget.
I have that, I, I don't know what the percentage is offhand, but I'll, I can email that to you as well.
Because that would, that would affect on that, on that pension levy portion of it, correct?
Yep, there is a, like I said, there is an increase from last year's numbers to this year's numbers, but it again, has to do with police salaries are going up, so so does our pension revenue or the, our revenue, pension expense.
As people get five percent pay raises, our pension obligation increases.
Correct.
And then some of the changes just overall with the rollback, you know, you have years where there's hundreds of thousands of dollars. And I think the year prior to this one, no, this past year was thirty-nine thousand dollars in new revenue. This time going into next year, it's, like I said, under five hundred thousand dollars. So trying to go back, make sure that we go to neighborhoods, continue to partner with entrepreneurs, landlords, raising value. Hopefully, we'll continue to see an uptick in those types of efforts, too. But I really want to applaud you for the simulator. I think that's a game changer and getting more feedback from the public as well. Mr. Bozen.
Just one more question.
Yes, sir.
Prior to certifying TIF next year.
Okay.
Okay. Is it possible? Because when we, when, when our TIF valuations a year ago went up three hundred and some million dollars and we had that, the, the, the option at that time, which we didn't exercise, to, to draw some of that increase out of, of specific TIFs that, that were doing better than others. Is that an option next year if we're, if we're facing budget, budget issues that prior to certify in our TIF December first of next year? That we could look at areas, I mean, at one time, we were drawing out of the Northeast site until, until the wetlands came up and then we got sucked back in.
Then we started drawing out of downtown.
Downtown. So to offset that five hundred thousand dollars in lost revenue, correct?
Yep. So yes, that is an option for us to look at. Depending on what projects are going on in the TIFs, though, would really determine if that is something that we should actually do.
A viable option.
Correct.
But it's still an option.
Yes.
Because I'd really like to explore those, those numbers prior to December first of next year, that, that if the possibility of us moving forward with, with something like that, if we had to, to, to try to level this, this property taxes out.
Yep.
Thank you. I appreciate all your hard work. I, I stopped to see you last week and, and Kim really was beneficial. I appreciate that.
Yep.
And actually, put into a format where a lot of folks can understand.
Again, and also with the budget simulators, like right now, it's at the proposed stuff. So once we get our adopted budget, I'll have it changed again, or I'll update it and publish it as our approved budget after that meeting. That way people can go in and do adjustments after the fact and then submit suggestions all year long as well.
And we're meeting once, twice, a couple of times a week and then communication about. And we're meeting once, twice, a couple of times a week and then communication about different options too. So got a lot of work to do left, but confident we can, we'll be able to get there. Counsel, any other questions? So keep in mind, this is, this rate, this will not be our final rate.
Correct.
So, all right. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.